Begin with our budget discussion. And Mr. Ingham, you and Mr. Peppers are going to handle that.
Yes, thank you, Council, Mayor. Mr. Peppers and I worked on this budget presentation up until just literally a few hours ago. You have in front of you a paper copy of the presentation. Obviously, you're just now being presented this document, so I know your questions may be limited. Mr. Peppers, and I'll speak more importantly for myself, I was hoping to gather two significant things from this particular meeting. One, as y'all discussed a couple or week and a half ago at that Thursday meeting, the millage rate presentation of 5.4. I don't want to rehash everything that was discussed that night, but we're moving ahead unless directed otherwise by Council with a 5.4 presentation. We can always differ from that lowering it or whatever Councils wish at the time. The second item that I hope to gather is, are the dates of our formal public hearings for the budget and the millage rate. Mr. Peppers and I were discussing maybe a couple of those on July 11th at the normal work session. Maybe we have a couple on July 11th and then have another special call meeting on July 18th. And so I would like some, you know, hopefully get some discussions, some feedback from Council on whether that would be feasible. Aside from that, I know it's very early. Questions, please feel free to email me, Mr. Peppers. And we'll be able to respond to any questions y'all have over the next coming week or two. I would go so far as to say if Council wanted to call a special roundtable event maybe before then, before July 11th to go over some of these, some of the details. I'm certainly open to any date. I'll accommodate any dates, times that the Council would like.
I was gonna, I was gonna mention as part of this, there are a few significant things that I want to bring to your attention about the budget, just as general items. The first is that based upon the discussion at the last meeting, we have already put into the budget a probation officer position and the revenues that would come from that. If that's probation, we've done that. You'll see that in the past, we had a budget for police department buildings and we had a budget for general government buildings. Now that the police department, municipal court, all of those are combined into one facility, we've combined that budget and the general government buildings budget into one. So there are facilities all in one place. The only one that's not included with that is the street department's building because it just serves public works. So you'll see a little bit of a difference there. I believe we have five new positions in the budget for this year. Two are patrol officers. One is a support staff person at the police department. One is that probation management position that we discussed. And then the fifth is adding a custodian for that building over there to keep it working properly.
What building?
151 Elizabeth Street. That also gives us a little bit of coverage, so one of them will be on vacation to take care of these buildings and also allows us to do some in-house custodial work at the theater as part of our three buildings downtown. So the budget has five new positions in it. Nathan's got more information on revenues and how those have changed. Those are the significant things. I would mention there's one significant capital item that's in the general fund budget that we mentioned at the last meeting, which is related to that grant for the window project at 151, where we need to do some, some work around the windows over there. It also shows up in that general government buildings line item. Of all the budgets, that's the one that has grown the biggest in percentage, but it's mostly because of that one project and then combining the police department building into that budget area.
If I may further elaborate, you have two, I think, two separate documents that are in your hand. The first one, which will have a, a cover sheet and the second page is a calendar. If I can just real quickly touch on a few of those pages that are in that document, that first document, the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. If you'll notice that the first handful of pages are a copy of the actual ordinance that will be presented to Council on that last date of the public hearing, whether it be July 18th or whenever Council chooses. That's the actual copy of the ordinance. All of this will be changing depending on what Council would like to see change within the budget. After that, after that document, approximately in page 13, 14, you will see it's basically the same document. It's just a regurgitation of the ordinance, but it has some percentage change in budget figures that Mr. Peppers was mentioning and it also has a few memo notes. This will show you some of those increases or additional personnel that Mr. Peppers mentioned. And that's on page, that's about 13, 14 pages into that first document, all the way to the end. The second document that you have is our worksheets. That contains all of the worksheets for the general fund, the water and sewer fund, stormwater sanitation and all the other governmental funds like the impact fee funds. Again, this is a work in progress. This is a document. I'll have a more formal presentation at the July 11th meeting or whenever the first meeting will have. And it'll be page numbered and all of that. So once again, this is a document I think that we needed to get to y'all to get some of those questions, start getting, working towards some of those questions and getting some direction on the millage rate, the 5.4 and some of the dates.
Where do I find the amount of money that is being transferred from the water department to the general fund?
Yes, sir. If you will look on page in the very first document.
Which one is the first document? They both look alike.
It'll be, it'll be the one with the cover sheet that says fiscal year 20.
The smaller one.
Operating.
Got you.
One with your names on it.
Okay.
And if you'll flip to about page. If you will flip almost toward the end of the document, and my apologies, I should have put page numbers on that.
You knew I was gonna ask that, didn't you?
And I'll tell you what, I'm going to jump, I'm gonna jump again to the second document. That's not gonna clearly show it. My apologies. The second document, page three, will show you that amount. The second document, the thicker document? Page three.
My pages aren't numbered.
In the green tab or the orange tab?
Green.
Page three, you will see at the bottom of that page, total budgeted revenues. About the third line from the bottom, transfer from water fund. Now, I'm not sure what, Mr. Peppers, so please interrupt me if I say something wrong, but I was assuming that this would be a contingent transfer. A transfer that basically this, this number coincides with the contingencies within the general fund, meaning we may not need. And so therefore, if we do not need that transfer, it was my intentions in not doing the transfer, but.
How could you not need it if you had the balance?
Contingencies. Contingency draws always contingent upon the need.
So there's, in our, in our budget, in our proposed budget, every year since I've been here, we've had one contingency fund in there. It's, it's varied. I think the first year I got here was about $300,000. This year's budget's just $100,000. That's if anything comes up, Council wants done, it's pulled from contingency. Very rarely have we used that, that fund. But we budget it.
So how much was it? I hadn't found that yet.
The $500,000?
Is that what it was?
That is, that is right there on the bottom of page three, about the third or fourth line up.
My pages aren't numbered.
And my apologies, Mayor.
Is the cover page count? Oh, okay. So if, if, right now, we're looking, this is predicated on a 5.4 mill.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right, let's say we didn't take any. The $500,000 would correlate to how much, to what millage rate would we have to? We've gotta advertise that we're having an increase anyway. So we could take that out, increase by the millage comparable to, to $500,000. And what would that be?
$500,000 equates to about four tenths, to a half of a mill.
Four tenths of a mill?
Four tenths to a half of a mill. Yes, sir.
So, so what we did when we were putting together the budget, we left that $100,000 general fund contingency that we've always had. Additionally, there's a contingency that shows up in the police department budget. We started doing a little bit of a contingency for them last year because as we were going through the budget process, they would, they had stuff in there for travel and equipment and what have you. And over the last few years, they didn't always get to take advantage of that. They're a sizable budget, about five and a half million dollars, so to speak. They also had some funds in there for vehicles this year. Well, we really only need to buy the vehicles if all of our positions are filled. And with the police department having 55-plus sworn employees, sometimes that number changes throughout the year. So don't go buy a new vehicle if you don't have a person to sit in the vehicle, so to speak. And so what we decided is instead of having a line item in there for capital outlay vehicles, not knowing what we might need to purchase in the year, we would just put some additional money in their contingency. If they need it, they can use it. If they don't need it, then we don't need to pull it over from the water fund to fill that gap in the budget. And ultimately, with a contingency, it's not gonna be used until later in the year anyways. So the other option is we cannot do a contingency and we can bring budget amendments throughout the year to Council. But we have to.
Well, we, we've had a contingency, every year that I've been here, with exceptional last year, I guess, that did not utilize water and sewer funds. Right? Last year was the first year that I know of that we've taken money from our water and sewer fund, which has a whole lot of needs, I think, to balance the general fund budget.
Well, no, every year we have had a fund balance and we had pulled from fund balance to help budget. And so last year, we didn't have as much in fund balance, so we pulled from the water and sewer fund. We've always had a contingency regardless of where it's come from.
Yeah, I understand, I understand you want to have a contingency, but I'm not sure you want to use the water and sewer money for that, but, you know.
Is water and sewer our largest revenue stream?
Yeah.
But somehow, no, it just, and, and this is not any news to anybody. I've said this many times before, it just doesn't seem like we ought to be charging our water and sewer customers for what essentially could be soccer balls or anything like that. And that's what you're doing when you move it from the water fund to the general fund. The potential is there. And, and, you know, if you didn't need anything in the water and sewer fund, you know, maybe one thing, but there's a whole lot of things out there and we're gonna end up having to borrow a lot of money anyway to do the projects. But borrow less if you had a certain amount of money on hand.
If you're increasing their taxes above four tenths of a mill, aren't you doing the same thing? You're paying either way, right?
Well, that may be, but at least you know what, you've got an idea of what that general fund is going for. And you're already charging. What, what do customers expect, in my opinion, to be paying for water and sewer? I don't think they expect to be paying for soccer balls or any other thing like that. I think they expect to pay for what they're, what they're getting. In the general fund, of course, you've got people that expect tax money to go for recreation or, you know, roads or whatever else, but.
Well, I mean, there's, there's some alternates to that as well. I mean, on the water and sewer fund, for instance, we have to cut the right of way where the water and sewer lines are located. So the general fund's actually providing some support to the water and sewer fund on an annual basis anyways to maintain those areas where we have water lines, water meters that have to be red and things like that. Up until last year, we weren't charging rent to the water fund. So we were providing office space to our utility department at no cost on the back of the general fund. So we increased in allocation to be able to help cover some of those costs that are coming in from the utility department as a space, for instance.
Well, we got a whole lot in our, I assume, got a good bit of the revenue in our water department. I mean, you know, we could reduce the millage rate if we wanted to put more from the water and sewer department in there and reduce our millage rate down below the 5.4. Right? I mean, we've got enough money to do that with.
Technically, you could.
It just, it just seems to me that these are two separate entities. One is the enterprise fund and one is the general fund.
And I might add, there are some municipalities that do just that.
Yeah, okay, I've had enough. Somebody else?
I have a question. Is the, the additional police department, are that, are those new employees or are they replacements?
There's two new patrol, patrol positions.
We're increasing the police officers because the job's gotten bigger with the bigger population.
That's correct. Two new patrol positions and one new position in the court bureau.
Yep, I got that. So did you schedule three public hearings for the budget just on the outside case that we would be increasing the millage or?
We haven't advertised any of those dates yet. That was one of my questions to Council tonight, if we could have some concurrence on when those dates need to be. July 11th, July 25th are our normal Council meetings, I believe, next month. Would the Council entertain having maybe a meeting at 11 o'clock in the morning on July 11th? Maybe one at 6:00 PM? And then a special called meeting on July 18th, possibly? Hopefully by that third meeting, it should be.
But if we're not, but if we don't increase the millage, we would only have to have one meeting.
Have one, as long as you do a rollback, it's one.
So we're meeting the 25th, aren't we? Which is a, a different, a different date.
We need, both of the meetings in July back one week because of the four.
Yeah, yeah. We, the county, and I think Mr. Peppers mentioned this, the county has to have the millage rate approved and signed by the mayor by July 31st or August 1st. So that was one of the reasons why I was hoping to entertain a July 18th. It'd give us some, some fallback time.
Yeah, I got it.
I had a question on the millage rate. I know part of the tax digest was just basically inflation or decreased values and part of it was growth. What would the millage rate be if we only increased, only covered the increased growth, the growth part?
It was about a 10% increase in the net digest and it was almost half and half. About half percent of appreciation in value and about half percent, 5% and 5% new, new development.
And so what would, if we kept it like neutral on the?
The rollback would generate that 5% from new development.
Be about three, three tenths of a mill, something like that, right?
I think we said 9.126.
It was the, the rollback was .274, I believe. That was, that was right. So, yeah, almost three tenths.
And that would basically cover the increased demands because of the growth, but not for the appreciation. I guess that's what.
That's right. No appreciation.
And what, that, what was that number, final number?
And that, that was about three tenths of a mill, which is about $300,000 of revenue.
Okay, so that would put it at what, five?
5.1.
26.
26, I believe.
Okay.
Road and sidewalk infrastructure, the fund, $500,000.
That.
Fund balance reserves.
The road and sidewalk has a little bit of fund balance in there. In it, about $500,000 or $600,000. And Mr. Peppers and I were, were really thinking outside the box, thinking about some of, in conjunction with some of those amounts that were held for resurfacing, the final resurfacing of some of these roads. We were just brainstorming, thinking, there's some funds there if Council wanted to combine those with some of those deposits or those amounts that, you know, some of these subdivisions and do some resurfacing. That's, that's available for Council. If we don't use it, it rolls, rolls forward to next year.
So one of the things we talked about was utilizing some of those add-on fees in this current, this upcoming fiscal year and taking care of some of those neighborhoods that are complete, for instance, like Iris Park, Park Village, Norton Lakes, and going ahead and top coating those neighborhoods. Because we're, we've pretty much caught up with what our demand was on the resurfacing on the other streets that are, that we've been working on. The most, the majority of the complaints we get now are on those neighborhoods that don't have. And while those neighborhoods are complete, there's no additional homes being done in there. Might be a good year to knock those out.
Those add-on funds are in here in the budget, right?
Yes, that shows up in the road and sidewalk fee.
They're, they're, they're right now a liability. So you don't see them in the revenues, the budgeted revenues or expenditures. They're in there.
One, one other note I would make. I saw an email earlier today that, from the county commission chair, basically saying that they, they were gonna look at rolling back their M and O rate, but they did not expect any change in their fire rate. Well, if they don't make a change to their fire rate to roll back, since we absorb the fire rate on our side, it's harder for us to make a reduction in our millage rate because we're paying for fire out of our millage rate. Does that make sense? So that's something that we always have to keep in, in the back of our mind as well as we're absorbing that fire cost in our existing millage rate. If they don't change theirs and we roll ours back, then we have to also absorb whatever cost of that rate we're rolling back.
Okay. Anybody else had a question, anything?
Do we have a number on what that protection might be?
It was on the order of.
Was it 3.8?
It's close to four. I'll tell you in just a second. It was, no, it's 4.25 this year in fiscal year 2020. Just over $4 million.
The difference in the hotel motel tax funds, almost over a million less projected.
Last year, we used fund balance for the Gateway Sign project. So it's already budgeted. Some of it's not gonna be completed in the fiscal year, but it's coming out of fund balance, not out of reserve, out of revenues.
So we're not projecting less hotel motel tax?
We're projecting a little bit less in hotel motel tax, but we also have plans in for a couple of additional hotel sites. So, you know, that's one of those fees, whatever comes in, we have to spend anyways.
Right.
Any other question? It's gonna take me a little time to go through some of this, but I do intend to go through, through this and we'll, there may be other questions later on. But we're gonna have a couple of public hearings, the 11th and the 18th will be a special call meeting. We can't wait till the 25th, which means a regular meeting.
Well, so, so that's basically what we wanted to ask you is, we're gonna have to have, if we keep the millage rate above a revenue neutral rollback, you'll have to have three regardless. And if you do two on the same day, one has to be before lunch and one has to be after 6:00. So we can do two on the 11th, you could do one on the 11th, one on the 18th and one on the 25th. You could do one on the 11th and two on the 25th.
Well, we could, we could do two on the 11th, right? And then one on the 25th. And then we wouldn't have, if we do, then we wouldn't have to have a special call meeting on the 18th.
If I may add though, the waiting to the 25th will give us a lot of crunch. If, if, for example, and I'm being hypothetical, if Council wanted to raise the millage rate or we did something wrong, we have to start anew and we'd have to jump into three special call meetings, but, you know, back to back to back. I'm not even sure if we could.
I don't think Council's gonna raise the millage rate above 5.4. I don't know.
Say, if we're not, if we don't raise it, we won't have to have the one meeting, right?
Yeah, really?
If we don't go, if we don't raise the millage rate.
If you, do a rollback.
Well, the only way you only have one meeting is if you roll back to the revenue neutral rollback, which is 5.126.
Otherwise, it's three.
Otherwise, it's three.
Even if we leave it at 5.4?
Even if you leave it at 5.4.
That's what I didn't understand.
Yeah.
Y'all kept talking about three meetings and I just had answers.
Well, I'm of the mind, 'cause we don't know, we might not, I don't think, we're probably gonna leave it at 5.4, but we might need 5.3 or 5.25 or something. And if we don't go ahead and advertise now, then like you say, we're scrambling at the last minute trying to get three meetings in.
Right.
So it's probably safer to go ahead and advertise 5.4 and then let it be what it is.
Right, yeah.
Just from a timings.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what.
And we did that. We, yeah. That's what Council did the year before last, I think. I think at the last minute, we.
You're already advertising though, right?
No. I'm waiting on Council's direction to advertise.
Oh, okay.
Because we have to advertise, advertise the specific dates, 11:00 AM, 6:00.
Well, I know, I know we did talk about that at the last meeting and I thought that's what we were doing anyway. So are you waiting for an official vote on that?
Do we need to vote on that?
No, I don't think you have to vote on it. I think you just need to, we just need to know with the thought of the head, you're okay with us to move forward with a 5.4 and the notices.
Right.
We'll have, we, you can't meet unless you've noticed the, the legal organ a week and a day.
Seven days, seven days in advance.
Prior to the first meeting. So that gives us plenty of time if the first one's gonna be on the 11th.
As you mentioned last time though, with the newspaper articles and the, and the issues there, we, we have to effectively do it two weeks. You know, send out the advertisement two weeks to the newspaper.
So this just means it won't be greater than 5.4, but it could be less.
It could be less.
Can't be more than 5.4, right.
Sandy, do you have something?
I'm good.
Okay.
And if I could leave one last idea in your, in, in your head, think about if you do want a budget workshop, July 6th, 7th, you know, sometime before July 11th, July 10th, 9th, 8th. Obviously, we would need to have, give a week's notice on that.
A week's notice?
A week's notice, a standard agenda notice, a week's notice.
To have a workshop?
To have, to have a workshop, yes, sir.
That wouldn't be a 24-hour media alert to a meeting?
Well, it would be, it would be, wouldn't it, if we go ahead and schedule the public hearings like they're supposed to be?
Well, you know, one option you have is if you wanted to, you could have a public hearing at, on the 11th at 11:00 AM and let that be part of a work session. Go, go on and have a work session up until you have a meeting later that night. You're not gonna take the whole time, but you could do it all in one day, basically.
That makes sense to me.
You're all, you're all gonna be here at 11, so.
We just plan doing that.
We can do a round table that afternoon and, I mean, basically, you're just letting them know at the first meeting, it's not gonna be any more than 5.4 mills and we're gonna have a meeting and go through it.
And as many of y'all will notice, when you go through the worksheets, that there's page numbers on there. I promise the final document will have page numbers on it so that when we get to talk about it, we have a little bit more direction.
I'm, I'm looking at these sheets.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the use of FB 5.3%?
So that's fund balance. That is, that is where, for instance.
That's okay, I got it.
Okay.
I didn't know what FB was. Then on the next page, are inter-fund transfers, is that like fire?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So, so what you basically see is that 55% of all of our general fund expenditures are public safety, fire and police related.
Police and fires, really?
Yeah.
Is that, everybody's clear?
Yes, sir.
We know what we're doing, hopefully. Okay.
Thank y'all.
Anything else on the budget? All right, well, the next item, discussion of the development in the city. You wanna start off with that one?
Why? I have questions.
You do?
I do have questions.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Did you wanna start though?
No, you go ahead. Pull your microphone down a little bit.
Okay. Can the city, we as a body, can we rezon property?
Absolutely.
And what is the procedure to do that?
Well, you have to advertise, you have to have public hearings.
So it speaks slowly so I can.
Ken can enlighten you.
What are the, what's the process for the city to rezon property? Just the process, not the muddy waters?
Basically, staff would fill out a rezon application. We would have to advertise for the public hearings.
How many, how many public hearings would there be?
Two, one for the planning commission, one for city council. We would have to notify adjacent property owners, not less than 15, not more than 45 days in front of the public hearing, conduct the public hearings.
You don't have to notify property owners if you have a overall rezoning, do you?
If it is a citywide rezoning map, a whole new map, no, you do not have to notify adjacent property owners.
Okay, you notify the property owners not more than 45 days?
Correct.
And not fewer than what?
15.
And then what? And then what? So you notify the property owners and then you have the-
Public hearings.
And then what?
Well, city council would make a decision on, uh, the meeting after the city council public hearing.
So there would be a public hearing with planning and zoning staff and they, I mean, board, and they would make the recommendation, and it would come before council, and there would be the public hearing there, and then at our next meeting, we would vote. Okay, let's go into the muddy waters now. What reaction would we get from the property owners and the public?
Depends upon what the rezon is and what, uh, is proposed, uh, with that rezon. Take an example, uh, say Great Sky, you wanna, uh, amend the master plan for Great Sky. Um, have a tendency to think that, uh, the owner developer, uh, declarant, uh, unless he's on board with, uh, proposed changes, i- is going to be vigorously in opposition. Uh, if city council were to do that, then they weren't in agreement, uh, I would tend to think that, uh, the owner developer probably would file suit.
That's, that would be the case with any, any property owner.
Yes, sir. Basically, uh, like I said, it depends, uh, 'cause I think they would, uh, challenge it on a takings, uh, because the master plan says that they can do this, 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 and this. Uh, and if, uh, you take some of that away, uh, then that's where you get into that takings issue, that sort of thing. That's just an example.
Sure. I think we can agree, at least one or two of us can agree, that, um, our zonings were done 20-ish years ago, when there was a different plan for the city, when the outer loop was planned, and the rage was to have multi-use properties and developments where you've got living and working and playing and commercial and industrial all within a s- the complex. We need to talk about if that's what our vision is now for our city, is that's, is that what's working for our city? We'll continue to use Great Sky for an example. It's become a family neighborhood. And I, I don't think they're very interested in having it be multi-use exactly with commercial and industrial on their periphery. I mean, they're not happy about the, many, I'm not gonna say all, but many are not happy about the storage unit that's up across from, uh, Riverstone Corner Bistro. It's an okay place for a storage unit, but, um, places like Laurel Canyon and Great Sky, River Green, Town Mill, I mean, they're, they're, they've become family places of residence and play and not places for business.
You know, when, when we went back and held public hearings and essentially rezoned all multifamily properties, I think we changed the zoning at that time, uh, and, and, and perhaps diminished, if not eliminated, the, uh, uh, the right to any kind of zoning that anybody wanted within those areas with respect to multifamily. So, I mean, um, I don't wanna get too much into this particular, uh, issue, but I think that we have changed the zoning there. And I think, I think we have to decide kind of what you're saying there. Is the vision now for mixed-use developments with multifamily and single-family, uh, mixed in together and even in some cases, commercial? Uh, is that, is that the vision we have now, knowing, knowing that when developers, for instance, come in and, and develop in a mixed-use development, they're going, and I've said this a million times, they're going to develop the single-family first. And there's a reason for that. And the reason is because they have more difficulty selling single-family if they develop the multifamily first. At least, it's the way it appears to me, because I, I haven't seen them develop multifamily, then bringing a single family around it. Uh, but, you know, I think, I think we do have to decide, is this, is this the vision we have now? Do we, is that what we want to, to do in the future? You know? If, if it is, then we, we need to leave well enough alone and proceed on. If it's not, then I think, you know, need to go through the process you're talking about there, you asked about, and look at, at some rezonings with it throughout the city. I think we've got too many categories anyway.
Yeah. If I may-
Go ahead, you may.
I may, thank you. Um, Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Grant, your ward is pretty tight. I mean, your parameters and your ward is pretty full, and there's not a lot of room for development except over by the hospital, and they're pretty much dictating what's going on over there. But Ferris' ward, Nick's ward, my ward, Jo Allen's ward, kind of wild space, uh, the wild frontier. And it seems like, I mean, I mean, y'all's got room to, a little room to develop, but you're pretty bound in. And I think Ward 1's full, uh, and I don't think that Ward 1 can develop anymore if another car is going to go out on 140. That road is not in good shape and it's a two-lane narrow road. And if there is a fender bender at, um, say Reinhardt College Parkway, uh, 5, it backs up all the way to Walgreens and backs up all the way to Laurel Canyon. I think we're full until we do something about 140. There is room out there, but I suppose there would have to be some annexations. There's room over by the Bluffs, that's in Ward 1. And, um, Ward 3 seems to be a bit open. And, you know, we need to talk about what we wanna do with our open spaces and what we want to see come there. I understand that, you know, developers wanna put in apartments. That's not really what we need. Um, we've got area over by, uh, where the old hospital was, it's torn down, and developers are gonna start coming to, uh, put in apartments or something else. What we could use there would be workforce homes, affordable homes, not Section 8, but affordable community for starters, for our bank tellers, our bartenders, our nurses and orderlies. And, um, I think a nice little village would be nice on that spot where the old hospital is, where there's maybe a row of tiny houses, a row of duplexes, a geriatric center, 'cause not every retired person coming to Canton can afford to go in Soleil. We need, uh, a place where geriatric seniors can live, uh, affordably. There's a facility or an apartment complex that is really just one building, and I've mentioned it before, it's not very pretty, uh, but it's subsidized, and I think we could use something like that for our, our senior citizens who are hard-pressed for money and can't go to Soleil. Next.
Next?
I, I don't, I don't think I understand the difference between rezoning areas and overlays. Do we have an overlay map that shows like, I mean, my concept of an overlay would be one area that would be residential primarily and one area that would be commercial primarily? Is there, tell me, I'm wrong or right, or so, so am I?
Well, a majority of properties, uh, that went through the annexation zoning process, 90s, 2000s, uh, the Great Sky, the Town Mill, even all the way back to Prominence, uh, Summer Walk, Park Village, Etowah Shoals, which has not even started any construction yet, back behind Walmart. All of those, uh, were zoned basically planned, developed, mixed-use.
Right.
Uh, they have, uh, single-family detached components, they have single-family attached components. Uh, several of them have multiple family components. All of them have a little bit of, uh, retail office. Uh, so zoning is in place under planned, developed, mixed-use with a master plan that shows areas within each of, uh, those developments what's gonna be allowed. In fact, uh, keep going back to the Great Sky example, there are, uh, 19 or 20 pods of proposed development with Great Sky. Uh, majority of those, uh, pods, conditions of approval specify that, uh, and I think it's something like a dozen of the pods can be developed, single-family detached, single-family attached, or multiple family. City council did amend the unified development code such that three units or more that are attached are considered multiple family and requires that additional public hearing process condition, a use permit approval, so that council can consider each of those on a case-by-case basis. Uh, overlay zone is something a little bit different, uh, than zoning master plan.
So an overlay, would that be sort of your vision for what you want to come in?
Well, we have our future development map within the comprehensive plan that has these character areas. Uh, the old standard, uh, land use map that shows areas residential, uh, you know, low density, medium density, high density, office, retail, industrial. That, uh, sort of went by the wayside through the state of Georgia, and they're planning, uh, programs that were instituted in the 1990s. Uh, that's why you, we have these character areas, which
Right.
moves more towards, uh, if you will, what the neighborhood is
Right.
and the effects on the existing neighborhood, more so than what a single page of a future land use map would show when it comes time to approve or deny a rezon application.
Well, I guess that's, you know, we're, we're, we're all sort of talking about the same thing. What I was concerned about was if we, if, that we familiarize ourselves with what is allowed and what's cer- in certain areas, so that we know that our vision is, is like it used, it was 20 years ago, and is it the same? So I think that's why I'd like, I wanted us to get together and look at, look at areas and is that what we have in our, in the future? Is that, if that, if the zoning is what we're looking for in the future?
Well, that will be something that council, uh, will be telling staff, what your vision for the city of Canton is. Like I said, right now, uh, in bulk of the development is occurring in those larger master plan developments. We've had very little outside of Great Sky, Laurel Canyon, Park Village, Summer Walk. Like I said, the one big one that's still out there that absolutely no development is taking place with is that Etowah Shoals property. That's approved for 1,200 residential units in total.
Man, is Etowah Shoals the only one like that that's just kinda out there dead at the moment?
Yes, 'cause there is some development with all the others. Bluffs, uh, there's approximately, uh, 220 or so residential lots. Bluffs is approved for 750 total residential units. Uh, Lannier Corporation is in the process of putting lots on the ground, start building, uh, uh, roughly 220 lots, uh, north of, of the county administration building in between 575 and Bluffs Parkway up towards, uh, Bluffs Court. Uh, they have designated other pods, uh, between the reservoir and, uh, Bluffs Parkway for residential development, but no developments occurred with that. Uh, most of the lots, uh, that have been approved in Town Mill are pretty well on the ground. There's only one pod left out there. Great Sky ha- still has a good bit. There is a, uh, master plan amendment that will be going to the planning commission in July for, uh, basically, uh, the remaining, uh, build-out of, uh, undeveloped properties at River Green.
One, one of the things I would mention is that it's easy for you to look in the map and try to figure out what's going on in various areas, but these master plan neighborhoods have so many uses that are available in each pod, that it's not easy for the public to decipher what's going there. And in most, most communities, when a master plan is adopted, it's adopted as a site plan specifically thing.
Right.
Showing you that in this pod, there's gonna be a little bit of commercial leading into townhomes, leading into single-family detached, and maybe estate lots a little bit further out. And that's not the route the city went with many years ago. And so, you do get the people now that say, oh, you, you mean they can build a grocery store right there if they want to? Absolutely. They could build it right across the street from your house in your neighborhood, you know? Even though it doesn't look like you could put one there. Um, I do think if you wanna go the route of looking at, say, citywide rezoning, it's a great opportunity, but you're gonna have to do a lot of public input sessions, you're gonna have to do a lot of work with the public to figure out what it is that they want, explain to them, you know, things like State Route 140 is not our roadway, so it's hard for us to get work done on it, you know? Uh, and, and have some opportunity, I think, to sit down with the developers in those neighborhoods and let them kinda hear us out on what things we're looking for and, and maybe there's a way for us to, I don't wanna say incentivize it, but maybe there's something we can do to get them to change their mind on some of these areas in the master plans as it relates to projects.
Well, did we did, we didn't do any of that in Canton Ford?
Well, so Canton Ford was just downtown.
Right. So, so maybe we need to do something like that for the whole, the whole city?
I think it's absolutely necessary.
And we need to look at-
Because unless we make the plan, the plan will be made for us.
Yeah. If we did something like we did for Canton Ford for the whole city, not just for the downtown, and found out what the public's looking at.
I think the public will eat it up and really enjoy the process of determining what their city will be. And it'll be hard work for us, but that's why we're here.
Mm-hmm.
We're here to work hard.
Well, ultimately, the worst-case scenario is you decide to rezon something and somebody sues you and the court says, no, you gotta change it back. And then at that point, the court's told you what you have to do and you can go back to the residents and say, look, we tried.
That's true.
Absolutely, absolutely. That works that way.
If, uh, you'll, uh, recall, even with the Canton Ford master plan, it calls for, uh, some higher-density residential, uh, as a component of the overall development-
In the downtown area.
Uh, within that defined boundary area, whether it's, uh, apartments or, uh, condominiums or townhomes.
Right. Can you answer for me how the development is going on in the Bluffs, the Lannar development? Weren't they gonna do 600 or 700 homes?
Uh, they walked away from, uh, all of the property on the west side of Bluffs Parkway.
Uh-huh.
Uh, they are, uh, under construction, uh, for the 220 or so, uh, lots that are between I-575 and Bluffs Parkway, north of the county administrative office building. Uh, they've already paved, uh, the first, uh, phase of streets in there, and if I'm not mistaken, they've got, uh, some model, uh, home plans that are in the review process. They should be, uh, beginning to build homes any day almost.
Have they put in their second entrance?
There's two entrances to that. There's one before you get to, there's, there's one at two roundabouts, I believe.
Yes.
In that section on the right.
Okay, so they have.
What about the area right behind the, uh, the mall? Does that, does that look like that's getting ready to develop in, into commercial, the Riverstone mall?
Kent Marketplace?
No, Riverstone.
Oh, um...
Uh, Mr. Sasser has met with staff on a couple of different, uh, projects in there. I think, I think there's a couple of hotel sites in there. He's looking at a few things. He hasn't brought anything forward yet as a master plan amendment.
Specific, right.
He's working on a ma-
Developing some more cur- commercial prop, developing-
He, he wants commercial, but I think he'd also like to add some residential in there as well.
He's working on a master plan, a pen, uh, amendment for Pod G, which is, uh, the pod that's directly behind, uh, the Publix, uh, Belt Shopping Center, where the, uh, climate control storage facility went in. That master plan, uh, uh, does have retail, uh, does have office, it does have single-family, it does have apartments, and it is showing assisted living. Uh, in total, Riverstone, uh, is, uh, on books through master plan is, uh, approved for approximately 800 residential units, and they still have, uh, a million square feet of office retail.
See, I think that citizens need to know, if we had some public hearings and let them know- what the zoning is in these areas, like behind the, like you were just talking about, what's supposed to go in, what could go in there, what could go in, in Great Sky? You know, I don't think the citizens really realize what the zoning is because lots of times I don't. And I just think it's time for us to put it before the public again.
I agree.
I think, Ken, I think would we need a consultant involved in this in order to do what we need to do? If we were looking at this citywide?
One, so one of the things you could do is you could, you could, you could start on a simpler goal, which is to inform the public in various parts of the community as to what's already on the books. So for instance, you have a, you have a work session or you have a meeting and that particular work session, we're going to talk about Riverstone. This is what, this is what the initial plan called for. This is what they're allowed to do in these particular pods and we can do it pod by pod for a few of those areas just to explain what can be built there.
You know, I think, I think one thing, if you had a map, because a lot of this is driven by multifamily. If you had a map showing where all the multifamily can go, is that in the whole city? Is that what that is?
Well, there is a map product that I worked on with IT that does show where apartments are already approved through master plan or zoning process and list the numbers. This does not reflect that, but this is currently available through the city's GIS online now. And this is approved development and it just gives broad parameters and numbers. For instance, Town Mill, single-family residential, five hundred and forty-one units. That number has decreased because they continue to build up there. The Etowah Shoals, twelve hundred residential units, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of office retail. Bluffs at Technology Park, the seven hundred and fifty residential units, three-point-eight million square feet of office retail slash technology. Great Sky, one thousand eight hundred nine residential units. Commercial, the way it's written up, I couldn't give you a square footage. I could give you the acres because there's so much square footage per acre that is set aside. Laurel Canyon, seven hundred nine residential units. There's still five hundred thousand square feet of office retail. Canton Place, overall master plan that incorporates Canton Marketplace as well as Northside Cherokee's Medical Office Complex. There's two hundred and four townhomes approved out there. There's a pod that's approved for three hundred and fifty-one apartment units. And there's an additional one million, six hundred thousand square feet of office retail. River Green has five hundred and seventeen residential units left. There's thirteen-point-four acres that are approved for commercial. We actually do have master plans for each of these that do reflect what is approved for each of the pods. For instance, Great Sky, there is a color of master plan that shows each pod and what basically could be built or developed within those pods. The owner for Great Sky, I do know is working on master plan amendment. I've not seen or heard anything about what they're looking at doing other than they have indicated that they are working on a master plan amendment.
You know, seems to me that while we may need to look at the entire city and all the various categories of development, what has brought us here principally right now is multifamily. So if we could maybe take a smaller bite of this thing and hold hearings for the public to come in and look, here's where multifamily can go and is already approved. What's your thoughts? Is this, is this what you want, is this what you want to see? Or do you think it would be better if multifamily were somewhere else or if there were no multifamily? You know, I mean, I mean, if you, it's a, it's a big task to take all the categories at one time, but if you take one of them and then you go to the next one or the next one or then kind of put them all together, I don't know.
Well, and, and, well, I was just going to say additionally, Mr. Patton and I were in a meeting the other day and, you know, it's not going to be long till it's going to be time for us to update that rental residential strategy. It carried us through twenty twenty. We've got apartments being constructed at the time now. We've also seen a little bit of population increase and what have you. It's not going to be long till it's time to refresh that study and see if it tells us, you know, what capacity there is, if any, has been added to that particular market.
Yes, Pogru.
And that's what I was fixing to mention, Mr. Mayor, council members. The city, we did do that rental analysis that was presented to the city in November of two thousand sixteen. That showed an absorption rate of one thousand one hundred eighty-one apartment units through twenty twenty. Latimer Construction at that time had nineteen rental units under construction. Crest at Laurel Canyon, three hundred and fifty units were under construction. Grand Reserve had already been approved through zoning, three hundred and eight units. Legends at Laurel Canyon approved two hundred and sixty-six units. Latimer has ten more rental units coming online over Scott Mill Broad Street. Factoring all of that in, there are two hundred twenty-eight rental units or apartments left to be absorbed through twenty twenty. But what I'm hearing now, Mr. Peppers has heard the same thing from several of the folks that we've met with that are still looking at wanting to do apartments is, well, what we're talking about won't come online till after twenty twenty. I've been asked if we were going to update this and I've basically told them, yeah, the city's going to have to.
Well, you know, remember a couple of years ago, Sandy and I had a town hall meeting just for, well, not one just for, but it was primarily for the people in Ward One. I wonder if we broke this out into wards and we had town hall meetings in each ward and let the folks that live in those wards come and see what were the future plans for that particular ward? Is that what they want it to be? That way, it wouldn't be so much to absorb at once. You would just be looking at the ward that is represented by two council members. Ms. Pogru?
Several things. One thing is we're about two hundred and something units shy of what the study said we could absorb. But just because we could absorb them doesn't mean we have to.
Right.
Also, at our retreat, we discussed redoing our ward boundaries, but we wanted to wait until the census. And for the life of me, I can't remember why we agreed to wait for the census when doing this rezoning, talking about a new vision for our city. I, I don't know why we would need to wait for our census.
We don't, we probably don't have really good population figures.
We have taxes and we have water customers that would tell us what our population is.
Well, I mean, you don't have to restrict them within plus or minus five percent, you know, and I, most redistricting is based on a census figures by now.
When will that come out, twenty twenty-one?
Probably.
I don't think we can wait.
We can guess.
And we at least need to be strongly working on it. Robustly working on it.
Suits me.
The, the consistency of population in wards doesn't really bother me that much because we represent, each council member represents the whole city. But it may restrict some of the people that want to run for council seat
Exactly.
because, because it's not encompassing into their area. That's, to me, that's the only reason for having a ward is just to allow people who want to represent the citizens in certain area. And in, and Ward One is a pretty large area and I think Ward, what are you in? Ward Two, Ward Two is a smaller geographic area. I don't know about the population, but I'm thinking more about the geographic area.
A few months ago, Ward One had ten or eleven thousand population. Ward Two had between three and four thousand. Ward Three had fourteen thousand residents.
And that limits who lives there being able to run for council because they represent everybody. So that, that's not the limitation. But maybe even, we could look at all that at, at each town hall meeting and say, do you want to, should we redraw these boundaries?
Can we do that ourselves? Can we with, without any kind of federal oversight or anything?
Georgia Legislature?
I don't know that we need the legislative approval. I still think we have some hurdles we have to go through with Department of Justice. And I think it breaks down to percentages and most people wait till after the census because that's the same time when they do the redistricting for Congress, State House and State Senate. It's all done basically at the same time. The county will have to do the same thing at that time as it relates their post. Align stuff. So most people wait and do it all at the same time so your voters know this is where you're shifting in all of these particular categories.
Our wards don't have anything to do with congressional boundaries?
No, but the voters within those wards may get, they may, they could very well end up in a different city ward, a different county post, a different state house district, different senate district, different congressional district. And it's a whole lot easier to explain to the voter one time what they're voting for than it is for them to consistently get changes over a period of two.
We could look at an entirely different system that's not based on wards.
Now, that would take some legislative approval because you would be doing that through a charter amendment process. But again, that's always something you could bring up at a town hall meeting and get input from the residents.
Right, and it would be, you know, anybody could come, but it would be primarily focused on the people in that particular ward. In smaller chunks.
Yeah.
The second week in August, when everybody's back for school?
And, and maybe not have a, you know, a whole big presentation. The only thing we'd be looking at would be looking at what, you know, what, what your actual, the people, what your ward looks like on a zoning map.
Well, I think bringing it down, you know, makes sense to narrow the area down or the discussion. And, you know, I haven't had anybody really complain to me about where commercial was going lately anyway, I don't think, or industrial. Just, just multifamily mostly.
If he is.
Haven't had a lot of industrial.
Yeah.
That's one zoning district the city needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have any light industrial zone property that new folks could come into.
Well, until we get a Best Buy warehouse near Great Sky or Laurel Canyon, we're not going to hear anything about industrial or commercial. And that's why I want to get a handle on it before we have to, you know, have, have an upset public outraged and get it done.
Well, it occurs to me, just as all this runs through my head, that it seems most of these communities, master plan communities, they just kind of threw the kitchen sink at them so they had total freedom to do whatever they wanted, when they wanted. And they threw commercial, they threw multifamily, they threw everything in. And most people don't realize that it's all in there because all they built was single-family. And so they think, they assume that's all there was. I mean, I know in River Green, they understand that it's either CVS or Walgreens owns the land out in front of the entrance, but they've never developed it. But they don't think about all the stuff that's down in the other pods. And very few, if any, I don't know if any of them still are the original developers that are doing it, are owning, own the property or developing it now. And it just occurred to me, it might be worth a conversation with the current developer and owner saying, what of this stuff that's in this master plan you have no intention of ever doing and no interest in? What can we pull out without any headache? And clean up these master plans? If they don't have to pay for the paperwork or anything, what are they willing to just let us wipe off the map?
Great Sky is really the only of the larger master plan developments where you have so many pods that have so many different types of land uses available. For the most part, River Green has that specific commercial area up at the front. It showed where townhomes were going to go. Then the bulk of it was single-family detached. Master plan amendment that will be coming to you later on will propose some townhomes in another area as a part of that master plan amendment. There'll be a conditional use permit approval come with that. Town Mill did away with their commercials, it's all single-family residential. The remaining property at Summer Walk, the applicants are working on a master plan amendment to do away with the commercial and add that commercial acreage in to an approved acreage for ninety-two townhomes. Park Village, their commercial basically was bought by Cherokee County. And that's yet to be determined what the county's going to do with that.
Where's that?
Park Village. Like I said, you know, Canton Place, it does show a pod of townhomes. It shows a pod of apartments, the remainder is retail office. Etowah Shoals, like I said, that's the one that no development has occurred with yet that they're going to be hard-pressed, I think, at the hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of retail office. But that twelve hundred units is a mixture of single-family detached and single-family attached townhomes.
How hard would it be to sunset that where they'd have to start all over if somebody bought it? Please wipe that out.
It has to go through a zoning process.
I, I was going to ask you, Mr. Patton, is it possible a new project comes into the city, gets a master plan on it, and the city council makes that contingent upon that developer? And should the developer change, the new developer has to come in and get a conditional use to continue with the project as is?
You can certainly place conditions relative to timeframes, if you will, but you still would have to initiate zoning action. Zoning runs with the property, that sort of thing. There's no automatic reversion when it comes to zoning or zoning approvals.
I had a conversation earlier today with the city attorney and, and one of the things we were talking about is the fact that, you know, when y'all are doing zoning cases, even with conditional use permits, for instance, you can put conditions on it and, you know, conditions can be as diverse as, you know, we're not going to allow any, we, we, we expect you to have covenants on this and those covenants to restrict that there will be no rental properties within this development. I mean, those are things you can get very specific on. And so sometimes we just need to remind ourselves that if there's something that we don't want, something we would like to not see occur, a condition might be the way to do that.
Can we make the site plan, the master plan amendments, can we make them based on the site plan?
Well, you can make a condition of approval of this master plan that's submitted within the application on this date. Any changes from that would have to come back through a master plan amendment process. Yeah, you can sort of make it site plan specific, it would be master plan specific.
But the amendments coming up, can those be conditional on the site plan?
Yes.
I'm a little more interested in seeing a citywide plan so that we don't have to deal with every specific developer putting conditions on each development that comes in. If we already have a, a master plan that we're comfortable with, then we're not going to have to deal with every single developer and the conditions that go on. then we're not going to have to deal with every single developer and the conditions that go on, on his or her project.
Well, I think that council's going to have to deal with developers as all of these previously approved developments get built out. Uh, unless. Uh, there's going to be annexations, there's going to be rezones, there are opportunities for redevelopment, things of that nature. Laurel Canyon, uh, the residential component of Laurel Canyon, uh, that most folks consider Laurel Canyon is about built out. There's still all of that, uh, there's several pods that are down there around, uh, Rock Creek Estates off Shoal Creek Road that nobody even really remembers were part of the original Laurel Canyon. And there's, I don't know, five hundred, uh, or five to seven hundred residential units. Uh, in those pods, it's never been developed. But what most folks think of as Laurel Canyon today, there's less than one hundred residential units left to be built. All of the activities moving towards, uh, Great Sky, Town Mill, River Green?
It's definitely an opportunity to have a discussion. Get the public sector, get the private sector, get the citizens involved. And, you know, the great thing about it is it may become a good marketing piece from the city.
Right.
And saying that everybody's bought into this vision and this is what we want and this is what we can.
Sort of like we did with Canton Ford, but do it all over the city.
But you know, in an area that's growing real rapidly, you're going to have a whole bunch of new residents come in here. I didn't know that.
I know.
And they're going to say, oh, I don't like this at all, what, why did y'all do that? You know, so you're going to still going, you, you're not going to solve the problem like that when you're dealing with the public like that.
If they are a city water customer, we can require them to sign off on something before they get their utility. We can make them look at their master plan. Or at least get a copy of it.
Yeah, it's called buyer beware and a lot of people don't do that.
Have we made any further progress on the housing study?
So, we received word back from the Atlanta Regional Commission that they had quasi-turned down the, the county approach to the housing study and that they weren't going to provide any funding, but they would provide staff resources to help do the study. I'm not real big in favor of providing any city funding for something that's going to be done by a state agency that may not have a value in it. Um, and so we've been talking internally about what the cost might be if we have to go out. Study, and so that's what we're working on right now.
Because I still think that that data would be invaluable in this process. I mean, I know we're talking about multifamily, but when we say, hey, we may not want this specific type of housing, but I'd like to have the data behind that to say, hey, we're saturated on this or we need this instead, what is that?
And, and what we may find out is that, you know, we do have a good diversity in the housing stock.
I don't know that and I don't think any of us do, but I think we need that data to be able to.
I guess my question would be.
Opinions on that.
I guess my question would be, are we understanding what we need or what we want?
I think we have to start with what we have.
I agree.
Did, did we put the moratorium on apartments when we were doing that rental study?
No, the moratorium was on annexation, rezones and order. And I think that is since passed.
I knew we did it, I just didn't know why.
Back up to something Mr. Pepper's talked about with that, uh, uh, quasi-city-county housing study. With my understanding, ARC basically would, uh, uh, provide a study for the county and the cities, but it would have no market analysis or no absorption rates or anything of that nature. Basically, it just almost like be regurgitating, uh, the existing housing numbers, what's approved through zoning, which we pretty much already have.
And that was only going to be on workforce housing, correct? It was limited to.
That was the approach was.
That was the approach, but I think they were really looking at it as affordable housing. But, uh, you know, if you're going to do something with housing, uh, I think you're going to have to look at, uh, market analysis and absorption rates and things of that nature, uh, to really be able to get a handle on housing, what, uh, the needs are, what the market can bear and things of that nature. It depends upon how detailed you wanted to get in the housing study as to what the cost is. I've seen some that have been extremely thorough and very detailed that run a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand.
I would hope so. Well, what's, what's your pleasure? You know, we, we've got an op- this council has an opportunity to help shape this way, actually the way we want as well as our constituents want. I mean, that's, but we have to know what that is they want, in my opinion. And I agree with Bill, we need to know where we are now, uh, as far as the inventory. Uh, and do we want more of this or less of that? You know, I think we have to, but we need to let, I mean, this is, there's a lot of leadership up here. And, uh, uh, but we should be governed by what the residents want here, the property owners, you know.
I think so too.
Should this, um, should the housing study drive this? After we find out what we have, should that be the driving force, the data? Or can we do town halls and this study simultaneously? What's the best way to?
Well, I think they can go on simultaneously, uh, because any town hall meetings or anything, uh, even if you hold workshops, uh, for neighborhoods or that sort of thing, there will be some data and comments generated that consultant that would work with the staff and city council on a housing study will already have that input and data, which should shorten the timeframe for any kind of contract work on a housing study.
Glenn, I think the housing study will take a while. It's not going to get any easier. So, I think the sooner we can start listening to our constituents about what they want, the better off we'll be. And I like breaking it down by wards, but I think, you know, just the information you've given us tonight, this is what, this is what's approved, this is what's yet to be built. I would like to see, maybe suggest we have a town hall, all of us, you know, and invite, you know, everyone citywide to come and maybe hear that information citywide. And then maybe we have ward town halls after that to take that information. Because here's what's going on in your ward, but I know if I'm going over to Canton Place or I'm going to Walgreens, I want to know.
Yeah, well, she's thinking about a way to, to enter, get the interest of the people. If it was citywide, I'm not sure if they would think, well, somebody else will be there to talk. Or if it was, if it was a smaller area, they'd feel like their input was more about.
No, I agree, but I think if we start off with a citywide and. Present this data about what's, you know, what has been approved in the past and how it's approved and why it's approved. And we can hear from, you know, uh, and maybe you can blow up some of this, some of these maps and we can hear from people at that time and then, then breaking down into smaller groups.
Even in the ward meetings, you can do five, ten minutes on, this is overall. This is where the city is overall right now, and we're going to break it down.
Yeah, here's your specific area, what do you want to see?
Yeah, so I think you can do.
Well, we, we really did get some good feedback during Canton Ford, we really did. Because it was held at different places at different times. And I was, I was really impressed with the, the, the input we got with that study.
And I would suggest that you have a physical way to collect information from people and also a digital way as well. Because some people may not be able to come to a meeting, but they want to send you their information, you know, through an email or a comment or what have you. And we, we'll, we'll figure out a way to take everything into consideration.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we ask Joe Ellen and Sandy to work toward that town hall meeting in your ward? And, and to work with the staff here to make sure everything is in place to, uh, make a decent presentation there about what we have. And then ask what, you know, get, get the input from the public in that ward.
And then we can model that in the other wards.
Sure. But, but your ward seems to be at the top of the list right now.
Yeah, theirs, theirs is the most.
We're getting too much action. Want to give staff plenty of time to get the budget settled before we do something like this and then give staff time to prepare the information we need. So, staff, when could we do a Ward one town hall?
Whenever you set the date, most of the data has already been collected. If you recall, about a year ago, I provided city council with about a twenty-page spreadsheet of all of these large master plan developments with, uh, what was, uh, left to be built and things of that nature. Uh, this is a map, uh, that, uh, in, uh, on the city's website under, uh, GIS, uh, uh, maps, there, this approved development map is available. You know, have copies of, uh, all of the individual master plans for every one of these developments.
Do you want it in the summer? Do you want it when school starts back in August? Do you tell us?
Yeah, I think it should be.
Let's wait till school starts back so that people are in town.
Yeah, and. I was just thinking when you were talking, if we had one big meeting and had everybody come knowing that we were going to break out into certain wards after we got the, the big picture and then we break out in our wards and have it all maybe at one, one time?
Well, you know, one option would be you could do one big meeting and then announce that meeting when you're doing these meetings around the city and you can come to the one in your ward or if you can't make it on that night, free to stop by this one over here, you know.
Well, I think that's what Bill was suggesting, wasn't it?
I'd like to do multiple meetings.
Okay, that's fine.
Because people may not be able to come to the big meeting, but they could come two weeks later.
And like Billy said, if they couldn't come to Ward one, they could go to Ward two meeting, so.
I think they're more likely to come to one in their community than they are if it's just for everything. I think they're more likely.
They're more likely to come for their own community.
Especially in your ward there right now, you know.
Right.
Especially if you have it in the ward.
Yeah. And maybe if there's food and beverage, people.
Of course.
It's always an enticement.
Okay, is that, anything else on that?
You got anything else on that?
Well, no, Joe Ellen and I'll talk and see what Billy.
Yeah, y'all work, y'all work for staff on that, planning that.
Staff and, and we'll have something for you, um, by July, for first of July.
Sounds good.
If not sooner.
But else?
All right, let's go to the next item here. Discussion and possible action regarding the revised joint project agreement with Cobb and Arietta Water Authority. I believe we've seen you on this issue before.
Well, we talked about this last couple of meetings and I guess there was a quest to, a little more time to review both of the proposals. In a nutshell, there's, there's two differences between the two versions. One, that's already been approved by the Water Authority. And then there's a couple of paragraph changes in the second one. The biggest one being, um, in section seven oh two, paragraph C, which, you know, in, puts in a, a clause for a possible anticipation of consolidation with Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, so.
But does not mandate it, right?
I don't believe so, I don't.
I can tell you no, the answer to that is no, I'll answer that one for you. It, it only provides an opportunity, should that potential be considered, uh, the council still is going to have to vote to do something. So, I mean, it's your pleasure, whatever you want to do with it. But, uh, I think it's, uh, I don't know what it could hurt to be in there.
The, and the other difference was the length of the term. The, the one that was already approved was the fifty-year term beginning from the original date.
That's right, that's right. Well, that was actually Billy's suggestion in our meeting.
And then the second one.
Wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. I just, I just explained to him, I was trying to figure out what would happen at the end of the remainder of the term, which I think is thirty-two years.
Or something like that.
Is it like a divorce? Do you, you know, now there's two of us and we co-own everything and we don't have an agreement how we're going to co-own it. And one decides to do something, then I guess you have to go to court and figure out how to split up your assets. Is it a joint agreement for the operation of something that in thirty-two years you may decide you don't want to operate? Now you have to figure out how you untangle it.
And, and, and that would also free them up to do anything that they wanted without our permission almost. Without any approval by the, by us, actually, right?
I don't think they've thought it to, the exact comment was, I won't be here in thirty.
Yeah.
Well, I may be here in thirty-two years, so I need to know what the plan is.
So, is the Water and Sewer Authority, have they, I know they've signed off on the first one, have they?
Oh, Cobb and Arietta signed off on the first one, yes. And I guess the, the, they're waiting on, on this decision. So, they're meeting, what, tomorrow, I believe?
I don't know if they're waiting, uh, or not, I don't think it's tomorrow.
Well, if, if it goes to this, this, if, if, if you vote on the second one, then they'd have to go and bring it to their board.
Yeah.
Will they most likely just approve it?
Yes, according to Glenn Page, they would approve it.
I think we have kind of beaten this horse pretty severely. So, I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve it.
Which version?
The one that y'all are recommending we use.
The second, the second one just adds an opportunity, it does not mandate anything. That's all it does. It doesn't, it, it's identical to the first version, except it adds that as a potential opportunity should the council decide at some future date that that was a direction and in the best interest of our water and sewer customers.
I'm saying the second one.
Okay, so you made the most?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay, let me, let me make a couple of comments here. Our obligation is to provide water and sewer service to the citizens in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. The Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority deals only with water and sewer and does an outstanding job. The City of Canton provides many services, water and sewer, building inspections, garbage collection, recreation, special events, farmers' markets, street paving and, uh, uh, other improvements, police, public safety, licensing, franchising, administration, enforcement of ordinances, among others. I think it would be in our, the best interest of our citizens if we could concentrate more on those areas that are important to our citizens. While water and sewer are extremely important to citizens, I have yet to have a citizen come up to me and thank me for the fact that when they turn the faucet on, they get fresh, clean water. I've never had a citizen tell me how thrilled they were that when they flushed their commode, the bad water disappeared. Not once. I have had many citizens tell me how thankful they were for Etowah River Park, the trail system, and other parks and recreational opportunities here in the city. I have had citizens tell me what a great PD we have and how good they worked with our citizens. I have had citizens tell me how good our streets are compared to many other cities and counties. But, uh, but I've never had a single citizen in my twelve years expects appreciation for the water that flows into their homes or businesses or the sewer that takes that away. This service is expected and no one cares where it comes from as long as it's there. My point is that our citizens deserve the most efficient and cost-effective operation of all our departments. And when we see that we can improve on that efficiency and save our citizens money, we should take a close look at it, uh, at, at how that can be done. If the city were to consolidate with the Water and Sewer Authority, our city would, could concentrate more on those areas that are important to our citizens, the parks, the trails, public safety, streets and bridges, code enforcement, historical preservation, special events, economic development and others. Some of our citizens are paying approximately twenty percent more for water and approximately fifty percent more for sewer than other city residents right now. I understand why, but I still think that's wrong. All citizens should be. All citizens should be paying the same rate for the same product. I think we, as a council, have an obligation to ensure that every Canton citizen is treated fairly and pays the same for the same product or service. That's not the case today. A city is designed not just to provide the basics to its citizens, but to provide the extras that our citizens want above and beyond that they would have if the city did not exist and they were in the unincorporated area of the county. Our citizens would be getting water and sewer from the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority if our city did not exist. But our citizens would not be getting the level of recreational activities and facilities and many of the other services that we're providing now and will be providing in the future. So I believe if consolidation were to occur, it not only would provide a more efficient, cost-effective delivery of water and sewer service, which I believe is the duty of this council, but it would also allow the city to concentrate more on those services and activities that are important to and appreciated by our citizens. This council does not have an obligation to keep a service just because we can or just because we have always done it that way. There's no room for nostalgia, lamenting the past, melancholy, or an attitude of, that's the way it's always been done in our county duty as a council. Just because it's always been done that way doesn't mean that's the best way. Facts and sound reasoning must be applied. This issue is nothing new. I understand it was considered strongly during Mayor Pruitt's administration, but never moved forward. We're on the threshold of needing perhaps as much as $80 million in plant expansions and improvements. The rate our customers pay is already greater than that of the Water and Sewer Authority. What will it be when we add all this debt to it? Do we want our current residents to bear the largest portion of that debt burden? And will these higher rates attract businesses? Or will the unincorporated, unincorporated rates have an advantage in economic development? The Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority has approximately 10 times the customer base as the City of Canton. Will their customer base alone not help pay for improvements to, to service our residents with water and sewer? This possibility of consolidation makes good sense to me and, to me, and that possibility should be given at least thorough consideration. I think our citizens expect us to do no less. If consolidation makes sense, for what reasons would we not work toward that goal? So it's very clear how I feel about this, I think. And nobody misunderstands that. However, that is only how I feel about that. That really is not what this agreement says. This agreement just says if at some future date it makes sense to you, and if you have considered it for your water and sewer customers, the council could act to do something like that. And it would be allowed by the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. Right now, they won't allow it. Under the current, the first agreement, they would not even allow us to, I mean, it doesn't do good for us to consider an alternative that would, might help our customers if we know that Cobb Marietta is not going to allow that to happen. I mean, it's just, you know, and, and to me, it just seems like we're not being really faithful to, to our, to our obligations here as far as water and sewer go. But anyway, okay. Next item.
So the second one would allow us to entertain the ideas of consolidation?
It would allow us to entertain that idea, but not mandate it. The council would still have to vote to do something like that. And then all that would have to be worked out, you know.
I'm not real clear, completely clear on this whole thing.
Right.
So Ferris's motion would be for the second write-up, and it would allow for us to contemplate at a later date consolidation with the county.
It wouldn't allow, it would not require.
Right. So your motion, I think, is sound.
And it also apparently fixes something, a question Billy had about the term of the agreement, too.
I'm not opposed to the shorter term. I just don't know what happens at the end of the term.
What is the term?
Well, so the initial term was 50 years. We've got 32 years left on it. But ultimately, at the end of 32 years, we're going to jointly still own an asset. And right now, the agreement tells us what we do if we have a disagreement. In 32 years, and we have a disagreement, there's nothing that tells us what we do. Somebody's going to have to sue somebody and judge is going to have to figure it out, basically.
Can we not put the language in for a third to, that would tell us how to resolve the resolution of?
So we're limited in the state of Georgia to 50 years in intergovernmental agreements. You cannot go longer than 50 years. What some communities will do is every few years, they'll re-up it. So it's rolling. It's always a 50-year agreement. Even fire services for us is, is only a 50-year agreement that we're now, you know, three years into, so 47 years left. So, you know, what I was basically saying at the, at the time is, if you're going to redo the agreement, you may want to consider redoing the term as well. Because the goal is that you don't want to have, at the end of 32 years, an issue that you're not going to be able to resolve. At some point, you're going to have to renew the agreement.
Are you recommending 50 years?
I don't know. I mean, I don't have a problem with 50 years. I just said, if you're going to do it, you need to figure out if you want to extend the agreement term. And that's what Cobb proposed, is going back to a 50 years.
The, the one thing that you have to realize is that's not the whole crux of this agreement. The, the biggest thing in this agreement is the storage allocation versus the discharge allocation. That was the big thing. And plus clearing, cleaning up a lot of stuff that was written during the construction phase that is now done and over with and, and gotten more into the way we, we operate it. That's the, the biggest items in this revised agreement. This was just a.
And that's in the first agreement?
This is in both of them.
That's what I mean. But that, that particular, the most important part is in the first agreement, right?
It's in the second one, too. The, the, yeah.
So there's really three options that you have. The first option is you could say, we don't want to change the current agreement that we have.
Right.
The current agreement that we have doesn't outline that storage capacity and allocation. So that makes it difficult sometimes to decide, you know, who can release what and when they can release it and how it's going to be paid to, to pump back in. So Cobb proposed that storage allocation in agreement number two, which is your first agreement tonight, as a fix. The city went back and said, okay, we appreciate that you're getting that benefit. Maybe the benefit we would like to see out of this is our ability, if we do want to operate with Cobb, with Cherokee County in the future, that we go ahead and write it in there. So we get something out of the deal as well. And that's what you see in the second agreement that you have, which is, I guess, what we would call option B. I think if we, I will just say this. I think if we went back and said, no, we're, we're fine with the agreement that we have now, it probably does some harm to Cobb County as it relates to the amount of water they have eligible to receive from Alatuna. Because they don't get credit for what they have at Hickory Log Creek that could flow into Alatuna. So they benefit from option, the, both of the options that are in front of you. The city ultimately benefits a little bit more in the second option that you have before you, because now we don't have to go back with them if we should decide to consolidate in the future. Whereas if we went with the first option, we would still have to go back to them and give them the.
You mean the third option?
Yeah, but this, this is, this is not our entire water system. It's only the reservoir, right?
This is just the reservoir.
Pardon?
This is just the reservoir.
Just the reservoir. It's not the whole water system.
No, that's all this affects. The, the.
Now, the, the city actually does benefit from a, from a storage allocation as well. Because we have a certain amount of water in the reservoir that is ours, and they cannot drain. They can't use it.
Right.
So the storage allocation is, is, is more beneficial to us as well.
But when we're talking about, you know, we have water to drink, that's not affected by this particular agreement. The water we drink comes from our water system, not the reservoir.
It comes from the Etowah River, which this ultimately would discharge to, yes.
Yeah, but I, I, I think my whole, and I don't have a problem with it, but I'm a little concerned about the exclusivity of saying Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. Why not say Cobb County Water and Sewer Authority, Mike, or Bartow County? We don't know what's going to happen in 30 years.
I, I can tell you the reason, because Cobb Marietta will not allow any other entity. I mean, I think, I think we ought to be able to do with our portion of that reservoir what we want to do with it. If this council wants to do anything with it other than keep it, say, you ought to have that as an option. Not that you would, but you ought to have it as an option. Cobb Marietta will not make that an option part. But they agreed to make it for that one Cherokee, they have a pretty good relationship with Cherokee Water and Sewer. And, and they agreed to allow that. And quite honestly, that makes sense. I mean, it, it, if anything were to be considered in the future, Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority would make more sense to me than, than something out of the county or somewhere else. But, Mr. Grant?
I mean, I agree with your statement that we should have the option to do whatever we want with it. And I share Mrs. Wilson's concern that is, that's only limited to that one option. And I totally understand and respect your, your opinions on consolidation. And I, and I'm, and I'm not saying that it doesn't make sense. I just, it's a big issue. And, and I think council needs to be involved in those discussions every step along the way, so we understand it and we can make the best decisions. And so I am concerned that it is limited to only that one option. And if it does, after we go through conversations, that makes sense, great. But if then, in 30 years or 15 years, you know, makes a better option for, you know, to privatize it or, you know, Cobb something else, then we, we, and if they're okay with it now, would they be okay with it if we did do that and they're okay to change the agreement at that point? I know it doesn't hurt having it in there, it just, just concerns me that we're discussing it now and we didn't discuss it before, you know, and, and when we were discussing the original agreement and, and the changes we were discussion, discussing at that time. So.
When, when could, when will this be renewed? When is, would the next time this, this particular agreement could be renewed?
We can look at it anytime we want.
So you don't, you can renew it?
I mean, we, we've actually discussed this in 2014, 2015, 20, you know, we've discussed it several times, but it's never gotten to the point where we're at now.
So if we, if we don't adopt the second, the second one on the table and just adopt the first one on the table, that doesn't mean we couldn't go back in three, four years and, and put this option in later?
That's correct.
It's my, my opinion that if you don't do it now, Cobb not going to let you. You're, you've kind of got them over a barrel right now, quite honestly, about allocation from Alatuna and so forth. And, and I think they're, they're needing, they're needing something. And this, we're getting something, at le, it, it, just in options, all we're getting. And if, for instance, Bill, if, if, if it came up that this was the only way, if there was a better option, then you could go back at that time with Cobb Marietta and say, look, will you let us transfer this to Bartow Water and Sewer Authority or to whomever? And they'd either say yes or no at that time, you know, I think. And, you know, this is just something in, it, it's in there, but it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't require mandate anything.
Now, one of the things to, to consider in dealing with these other entities, it may be just Cherokee may be the only one available, because you get into a lot of these inter-basin transfers with water and, and stuff like that. So there's really not a whole lot of auctions out there. But anyway, that's just, that's kind of another issue. We've been here long enough, we don't need to talk about those. Yeah, yeah, you got wheeling charges and all kinds of things, so.
So Mr. Hattaven, you, you think there are advantages for option one or two versus what we have currently?
Oh, absolutely.
For the city?
Yeah. Because if, if you left it the way it was, either entity could essentially drain the reservoir. Because you're, you're, you're allowed to discharge so much a day. Whereas the storage allocation, either entity has its allocated, you know, volume and can't touch the other volume. So we'll always have ours if, if need be.
Well, I think Ferris was right. We have beat this dead horse here several times now. So we have a motion on the table.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, we have a second? Okay. Are there, is there any other discussion on this horse?
And this is for the second option, for the, for the one that options Cherokee's.
Right.
Just want to be clear.
Just additional paragraph. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, okay. What do we have?
Five, one.
Four, one.
Four, one.
Okay, all right. Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, that was the last item, but I would like to insert here an executive session to discuss personnel and litigation. So I'll entertain a motion to, before I do, I would like to recognize somewhere out there, there's a lot of people out in that audience there. This former, former commissioner of Cherokee County, Larry Singleton. Appreciate you being here and enduring this for a few minutes. Thank you.
Few hours.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn the executive session?
We'll move.
Second. Mr. Goodman made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We, we won't be coming out to vote on anything, so we'll be here.